Good evening. It's six thirty and I'd like to call this meeting to order. If we could rise to the budget.
I declare allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could have a moment of silence for our fallen police officers in honor, sorry if I could talk tonight, please appreciate your week. You may be seated. Has broken open?
Yes.
Chief Senator, can we do us the honors again, please?
Yes ma'am. Chief Senator, may I please rise well and inquire?
Dave Rinkman, role of the session. Don Grex, Director of Public Works.
Captain Sweet, Director of Senior Services and Community Engagement, Department of City Treasurer.
Kristen Kenyac, City Clerk.
Pam How, City Council.
Jerry Link, City Council.
Ellen Glass, City Manager.
Pat Parker from Simon and McGovern, Parker City Attorneys.
Liz Armstrong, Mayor.
Brad Dick, Mayor of Rhode Island.
Denise Miller, City Council.
Tom Hicks, Council.
From Simons, the City Councilor.
We have no special presentations, so we're going to move right into the City of Linden, this year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budget, public hearing.
Madam Mayor, City Council, we are required by the Uniform Budget Act to conduct a public hearing, to receive any public comments referenced on the budget within this packet tonight.
I might have to pull our microphones closer.
Okay.
Everybody's struggling to hear tonight.
Thank you.
So I am opening up for public comment on this public hearing for the budget at six thirty two P M. Do we have any public comments on the budget? Yes ma'am, come on up to the microphone, please. Thank you.
My name is Republicans, five zero six North Bridge Street in Linden. I'm the Director of the Losi Senior Center Chorus. During the twenty twenty four spring tea, the Losi Chorus held a fundraiser to cover the cost of music. There were also several donations from individuals that were designated for the chorus. On May eighth, twenty twenty five, the balance remaining was four hundred seventy eight dollars and eighty three cents. On May eighth, two thousand twenty five, chorus members had another fundraiser at the spring tea. They raised eight hundred nineteen dollars. Therefore, we have a total of one thousand two hundred ninety seven dollars and eighty three cents designated for the chorus on May eighth. The funds were turned over to the Losi office and deposited into the bank account, which is now controlled by the City of Linden. Since the Losi budget has been merged with the city budget, we would like assurance that the one thousand two hundred ninety seven dollars and eighty three cents and future donations and fundraiser proceeds specifically be designated for the chorus and be set aside for the use of the Losi chorus for music and expenses of the chorus. And I would like this to record that any funds raised by the chorus themselves or donated for us be set aside and not go into the general budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments on the budget, the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budget? Going once.
Monica Lerner, one five two West Ralston Road in Linden. So, you know, it's highlighted that the tax village is proposed to increase. So how does the process work on the budget? I know this Wednesday, there was a couple of the councilors that had come in and I assumed to work on the budget. Is there a board, a commission, a resident thing that helps with the budget? You know, why is it seem to be just all controlled, you know, in one little corner?
Thank you. Any more about the budget?
My name is Justin Collins, three one two, Pauline Pass, Linden. I can't fathom a single reason why anybody would vote to increase our village at all. We as taxpayers are freaking broke. All right, my water taxes have more than doubled in four years. My water bill now has doubled. The idea that you guys should just get more money from us, just keep coming to the bank to us, we're broke. At some point, instead of just coming and reaching your hand into the cookie jar, somebody needs to take some responsibility and start cutting waste. There's no reason, I'm sorry that I know there's new people here, but how this city has been ran for years, there's no reason a single freaking person deserves a goddamn raise here. It blows my mind that anybody here would want to, or think that's justified, give somebody a raise at this point, when you sit here and just keep taxing us to death? It is ridiculous.
Any further comments on the budget?
I have a comment, Madam Mayor, if you will.
Let me finish out here and then.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to close the public hearing.
That's okay.
Second call for last public comments, anyone? I close this public hearing at six thirty seven P M.
Just a quick question, has anyone sat with Mr. Collins to discuss the budget? Has he come forward to the city to talk about how the budget process works? Has it been explained to him at any point because he seems really upset? So I like.
I'm upset of every single person sitting up there for the last ten years.
The due diligence that we practice, which we do, we answer our residents' questions and they do a very fine job.
Lies.
I would just like to be reassured that he understands exactly what's going on. So because he seems really angry and he understood it, I don't think he would be so upset.
I have not personally sat with Justin to go through the budget specifically, but I know there is some confusion in regards to the public notice that we are required, the public notice that we're required is very specific that we have to post. And it does not say that it's a tax rate increase, it says the property, the property tax mileage rate proposed to be levied to support the proposed budget will be a subject of this hearing. And I think in my memo that I included in the packet, it does say that there is no intent whatsoever for a tax rate increase and that if we are changing our millages, those have to be a vote of the people.
Yes.
So there's no proposal for a tax rate increase whatsoever.
I think the gentleman may not understand the difference. So thanks for explaining. Thank you, that's all I have.
Madam Mayor, before you proceed, looking at the agenda, I believe we need to remove the water fee structure out of new business and back up to unfinished business.
As well as Forest Ridge.
And Forest Ridge P U D also.
Agreed.
So I will make the motion to amend the agenda.
Should I hear a roll call?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Miller?
We think two items have not finished.
We have two members in that. We have finished, she just called you about. Well, I had to get her to get them just one third.
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Fineman?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Armstrong?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
So we did have one piece of correspondence, it was a comment submitted on behalf of Spalding Manufacturing.
Madam Mayor, if you would, might I like to respond to that? Mr. Alan Young, on behalf of Spalding Manufacturing, recently went on the record requesting the purchasing process for an asphalt hot box as presented at the April twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five meeting. More specifically, he questioned my management of that process. For that reason, I would like to respond to the record. First, he said I instructed him to include a hydraulic camper lift, under a quote. That is correct. He showcased the hydraulic lift as being available on his units with hydraulic systems during our demonstration, so I had him quoted. At no point during the process did he suggest that this could or would jeopardize his opportunity to be competitive. And as it turns out, that was for a good reason. You will notice as letter goes on to state that the other companies were allowed to submit a bid with less expensive versions of the lift, which prevented Spalding from being the lowest bidder. That is simply not true. In fact, the Spalding hydraulic lift, as submitted, was twelve hundred and seventy five dollars less than the twelve volt lift included in the quote by our recommended manufacturer, and yet the Spalding quote remained more expensive. Second, Mr. Young stated that I said the My Deal contract would be used for pricing purposes. When talking to each of the manufacturers, I asked if they are part of the My Deal or any other cooperative purchasing entities. This is simply to verify that they qualify under the city's cooperative purchasing program. In this solicitation for quotes, I specifically used the following language. I quote, "I would like your best numbers on the following units." I do not know if My Deal price includes Spalding's best numbers, but I specifically requested their best. Mr. Young also goes on to suggest that the process may not have been fair and equitable. Pardon me if I do not take this allegation seriously. It was Mr. Young that felt it was appropriate to try and sweeten the terms of his quote by adding two thousand dollars of free maintenance item once he discovered he was not the low quote. I wonder if the other manufacturers would feel that Spalding's attempt at a last minute modification is fair and equitable process. Lastly, Mr. Young seems to suggest that the determining factor on our purchasing decision is simply the lowest cost, which is not the case. City staff very carefully evaluate each piece of equipment we consider purchasing to ensure that the city receives the best value, not just at the time of purchase, but over the life of the equipment. This process is typically utilized to identify what communities consider the lowest qualified bidder. In that process, things like overall quality, ease of use, serviceability, warranty, reputation, and a whole host of other factors are considered to determine the best value for the lowest qualified bidder. In closing, the city selected the manufacturer that we believe provided the best value for the City of Linden. The unit we recommended and approved is a high-quality product with a great reputation. It provided more optional upgrades, a higher discount percentage, a better warranty than the other manufacturers, and it was still the lowest cost. Thank you.
Thank you, Doc.
We're going to move on to public comment. Can everybody hear me okay? Any person wishing to address the City Council during the meeting will get three minutes under public comment. When the public comment is posted on the agenda, individuals wishing to speak will be called upon using the build-out comment form. Your remarks should be addressed to the presiding officer. It is not a time for debate, but for questions or comments from council and/or staff. Questions will be answered and the information is readily available. If answers are not available during the meeting, councilor, staff will contact the individual within forty-eight hours and respond to the question within ten days or when the information becomes available. And I just want to add a little piece to this, super quick. Just so that everyone here is aware, council cannot, it's against the law, okay, for us to respond during your time. It is literally your time to talk to us with no interruptions. So when we just sit and look at you, it is not out of disrespect, it is not because we are not hearing you, it is simply because that is what we are supposed to be doing. That's the way we're supposed to be handling it. So I wanted to make sure everybody was clear because I had had a lot of people, you know, coming to me and telling me and I didn't want anyone to think we were being disrespectful. Okay? So moving on, we're going to, Monica, I see that you put two in. Can you condense these into one, three minutes?
Yeah, and I love to, I have the poppy and then I got the pop.
Is she allowed to do two poppings?
I think she just has three minutes to speak about whatever, any non-adjudicated comments.
You get three minutes, it's quick, yeah. Sorry.
Monica Lerner, one five two, West Ralston Road. So first off, for the American Legion, this is poppy lump. So the red poppy, or every member of this poppy, is symbolizing lives lost to war since World War One. So we're going back to nineteen fourteen. So the American Legion has set up for Poppy Days on Friday, May twenty-third, which is actually the National Poppy Day, will be at Alpine Market and Ace Hardware between nine and five. And on Saturday, May twenty-fourth, also Alpine Market and Ace Hardware from nine to five. This Thursday, May fifteenth, will be at the Linden Car Show between six thirty and eight. We also have canisters set up around town. In Linden, we have Shirley's Diner, we have Sunset Corals, Linden Hotel in Crow's Nest, Choice One Bank, Linden Brewery, Down the Hatch, Charter Senior Living, Argentine, we have Cancun Restaurant Number Two, North Shore Market, Lobdell, Cardi Store, and Benton, Coldwell, Professional Bakers, Vincinia Gardens, and Leopony Island. So last meeting, I had to leave early because my caregiver leaves at nine o'clock. And so I didn't get to hear the comments about things. And for Councilor Denise, I was not making a comment about your phone. And so I wouldn't do that, I have my phone on because we have, you know, I have the caregiver be able to get a hold of me. So the other thing was, so over the weekend, the Lions Club hat was set up on the Four Corners. And I realized they do that every year. So on the Broad Street side, going toward the light, I guess that would be east, the gentleman had a whiteboard. And on the whiteboard, all of a sudden, it's know the law. So I don't know what that was meant to be. You know, I don't know if it was over public safety or, I don't know. It just kind of confused me and, you know, so if I could have that, you know, answered why it was put that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Ramona, did you still want to speak on the PUD for us or?
I've said one already, so thank you.
Thank you. Justin Collins?
Get to see me again. So answer a few things, nobody has sat down and talked with me. For the record, I would never sit down and talk to her again because every time I have, it's been a lie. The fact is that every question I've ever answered, I've never got a single response from this city. I have put it in writing, I've asked it early, and nothing's coming back. Don has been great in communications with trying to deal with some stuff in our neighborhood. But I would like to put on record and formally ask that the city change some of the permitting processes. Don, you might know what I'm about to bring out. As a member of an HOA, we have our Bible list, everybody in there has to agree to it. The city approved building houses in our neighborhood. As one of the HOA members, we didn't know this was happening until they had tractors on the ground and they were clearing the stuff. We just had another issue with permits were given, that we knew nothing about it until equipment was out there digging holes. And it's, it'd be nice if the city would look, we got multiple HOAs here to prevent some of this because we had to get bag on it, we had to go serve cease and desist orders to get people to stop building in our neighborhoods till we knew what was going on. It just, it creates a bunch of headache that if the city is working with somebody that lives in HOA, say, hey, part of your packet turn in, have it approved from your HOA. Prevent a lot of headaches, prevent a lot of financial costs on some of us who have to spend money to fight this up to figure out what's going on just so we know. So we're included in the loop. But I would just like to have it on public record, you know, me and you talked about that. Actually, it wasn't you, I'm sorry, it wasn't Don, but I talked to you about something else. Adam Young, am I thinking of the right person in permitting? I think Adam I was talking with? Okay, sorry, got you guys mixed up. That's all I have on that.
Thank you. Heidi Fletcher?
Heidi Fletcher, fifteen seventy West Ralston Road. What I'd like to request is an update on the construction of West Ralston Road project. We haven't been updated on where we're at with it, when it's going to start, how long it's going to take, so I am requesting an update on that. And then recently, I noticed there are twenty-one acres for sale on the corner of West Ralston and Holden Road, and that's just outside of the city limits of Linden. Given all the issues we're having with construction equipment, construction traffic, I'm outside of where we live right now. But preemptively, I would like to request that the City of Linden deny use of West Ralston Road after its rebuild, repair, whatever we're doing to the use of construction traffic or construction equipment. They do feel that we're doing a special assessment district. We shouldn't be responsible to maintain road crews and heavy equipment for a property that's located outside of the city limits. And then one other thing, you know, we walk down there, still within the city limits in the wetlands, there was a large piece of furniture in there that was retrieved, but there are still four tires. And I do believe that wetland is within the city limits. There is a lot of dumping that happens over there. I would just like to see if we can look into that because we want to preserve the wetland area as best we can and furniture and tires and garbage don't help. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so all those that turned in for the PUD, the Planned Unit Development, I am saving yours so that I can call on you during that particular time. That's coming right up, okay? All right. And then Ellen, go ahead and take your time.
Sure, I'll try to address maybe some of them. Monica, you had mentioned something in regards to the Lions Club set up on the Four Corners. I don't have any information on that, I'd have to follow up and see specifically what you're referencing, so I can follow up with you.
I was on the road, so I couldn't take a picture, so I can just describe.
Okay, okay. Justin, thank you for the comments as far as changing the permitting process. I really don't have anything additional to add there. Don, do you mind providing an update for Heidi on the West Ralston Road project?
So we have a pre-construction meeting with the contractor this Thursday. I would expect that we'll have a schedule next week, probably following that. As soon as we have that information, we will be holding a public hearing so that residents can come out and become more aware of the project.
And then as far as the debris and things like that and the dumping, it's noted and we'll.
It's one's a dumpster, but it's still a little bit of a, it's on the south side.
And then as far as us limiting traffic for the twenty-one acres potentially for sale, again, I have it noted, would that something that we would have to discuss with Fenton Township and talk with our attorney to see if there's anything? If it's a Fenton Township project and it happens to be developed that goes in there, could we limit them from utilizing West Ralston Road, the public road?
Generally, that's a hard thing to do in a public space. Limit them to the use of your city residents.
But I have to know that.
If you hear you.
Will you repeat that please? So it's something that we would actually have to follow up on because it's a Fenton Township parcel that she's referencing with the Four Corners and things like that. And it is noted and I don't know that there's necessarily a development per se, but it's something that we would have to talk with Fenton Township and I don't know that we could be able to limit because it is public health specifically, so.
Public comment is now closed. So we are on the consent agenda. The City Council meeting is May April fourteenth. Application to use public property for having a Linden karaoke development. Application to use public property helping in Linden River Roast. Street collection application for the Remembrance of Columbus and the Financial Reports. Make a motion.
Support.
Armstrong?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Timon?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Yes.
So now we're going to go into unfinished business. We're going to start off with the Forest Ridge Estates preliminary unit development.
Good, we're looking, I'd like to make a motion, I don't know how to address this, I'd like to talk to the audience. We have a lot of students in the audience and I need everybody just to understand we have our young adults out there. So I know there's a couple of things you're going to be heated and we need to just address that the kids are out there too, okay? This is not every means. I appreciate it, thank you.
So this is just, this was postponed from the last meeting. In your packet is a amended agreement that Attorney Gildner has proposed with language and red. You'll see, we do have our city engineer as well as Adam Young here as well to speak to the planned unit development.
All right, we'll start off with the public comment for us. So I am going to go to Janet Severlin.
Hello, my name is Janet Severlin, I live at one forty-four Kristen Court in Linden. My home is in the Forest Ridge Glen subdivision. There are many water problems in Forest Ridge Glen's and Forest Ridge subdivisions which must be addressed. The concept of building thirty year homes in the area without considering the existing water issues and meaningful solutions will only exacerbate our current water problems. The Forest Ridge Glen's HOA homeowners are standing water in their yards. Some sub pumps are running as much as every minute. There are underground springs. Even in the summer, the land including the subsoil is saturated with water. I'm unable to mow my backyard because of the standing water. Trees are falling because the roots are saturated with water as well. The Forest Ridge Glen's HOA is not against having homes built in the proposed Forest Ridge Estates. The problem of Forest Ridge Glen's is private. The Glen's was abandoned by the original developer of the City of Linden. So we're taking a stand to try to protect our co-owners from future flooding and damage to the infrastructure. It should be noted, the original drawings in two thousand two called for a twenty foot buffer zone between a structure and wetlands of protected area. The setback in the township of Fenton is twenty-five feet. Furthermore, sites one, thirteen, Furthermore, sites one, thirteen, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine in the proposed PUD units have setbacks between one foot to several feet to the wetlands. The question arises, how is the city of Linden able to enforce building codes for property improvements such as decks, patio, gardens, or even landscaping when at least six of the units are a few feet from the protected wetlands? Presently, there is a twenty-five thousand daily fine for violations of building and/or environmental codes in the wetlands. The owners of the proposed lots will need to be informed of this mandate. Pursuant to my aforementioned concerning questions, the final determination by the city of Linden leaves much doubt for the present and future owners of the protected properties.
Reed Johnson?
Good evening, everyone, thank you for your service. Just a reminder to the council and everybody else that in two thousand two, there was only one wetland on this entire property area. Today, there are five. That means that Mother Nature has created four new wetlands in twenty years. Prior to the Linden City Council approval, an engineering solution and agreement to the flooding and wetland expanding issue in the Cold Lane area and Lower Lane area must be, must be done. Prior to the Linden City Council approval, an engineering solution and agreement to the storm sewer piping issue going to the two catch basins on the Cold Lane, that solution must be reached before approval. This water currently flows to the detention basin of Forest Ridge Glen's. Thank you.
Mary?
Mary Burns, I live on five Lower Lane in Forest Ridge Glen's. Our request, prior to the Linden City Council approval, is an engineering solution and agreement proposed detention basin to be added on the west end of Forest Ridge Estates adjacent to Forest Ridge. Prior to the Linden City Council approval, an engineering solution and agreement to propose six hundred foot swale ditch located along the Grand Trump Western Railroad grade. This proposed swale ditch will discharge water into the wetland on lot four units twenty-seven. And that's on a site plan updated one nine twenty twenty-five. Prior to the Linden City Council approval, an engineering solution to prevent flooding of Forest Ridge Glen's lots thirty-three through thirty-seven along the cul-de-sac of Lower Lane and performance guarantee needs to include a hundred thousand dollar deposit and agreement. And I would just like to thank the entire city council for helping us try to prevent a rerun of what we went through in two thousand and two because that builder was not required to do anything. That's why we don't have a final grade on our road. Thank you.
Thank you. Ben Bissel?
Hi, I'm Ben Bissel, I live at two sixty-eight Lower Lane. Prior to the Linden City Council approval of the new development, I'm Forest Ridge Glen's. We are asking for a performance guarantee to be implemented and include a dollar amount and timeframe for protection of Forest Ridge Glen's HOA and its forty-nine co-owners. This needs to be a cash deposit with the city of Linden. The Master D of Forest Ridge Glen's does indeed state that Lower Lane is to be used for access to any future developers' construction traffic to the fourteen point nine six acres of land. Therefore, a deposit of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for repair of damage to Lower Lane should be set at a timeframe of no longer than five years from approval should be implemented for completion of the PUD. I am the homeowner of the, on the corner of Lower Lane and Andrea Ave, and I will be staring at nothing but construction for the next five years with construction traffic flying by my home at all times of the day, flashing lights and making noise with my small children occupying my home. Conversely, in the event that the Linden City Council approves for Andrea Ave to be the construction traffic route, then we at Forest Ridge Glen's ask for a set deposit of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars with the city of Linden to protect damages to Lower Lane as there will be no stopping construction flow from our entrance given it is outlined as such in the Master D. The Linden Planning Commission approved condition number six provides that Lower Lane is surveyed prior to and after construction to maintain the integrity of our road. Additionally, prior to the Linden City Council's approval, the performance guarantee also needs to include a deposit of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for damages to storm sewer piping in our detention basin in Forest Ridge Glen's, which just so happens to back up to my home and fall within twenty feet of my property line. A written plan for cleaning and video inspection of the storm sewer piping system located in the fourteen point nine six acres needs to be implemented. Protecting the catch basins with filters and preventing the twenty-two years of collection and sediment in the storm piping from entering the Forest Ridge Glen's storm sewer piping and detention basin is pivotal in protecting not only the pollution flow into the Shaiwasi River and eventually our surrounding lakes, but the overflow of twenty-two years worth of sediment and vegetation from flowing into mine and my four neighbors' backyards and basements. If you were the homeowner that shared a property line with a detention basin that you can see out of your bedroom window flowing into your backyard, I'm sure you would want to protect your home's foundation and basement. Along with the control of what eventually flows into Lake Huron where it just so happens the city of Linden now sources its drinking water. Thank you.
Thank you. John Hill?
I'm John Hill, and I live at two ninety-two Lower Lane. And the Linden City Council has a responsibility of a hundred and thirty concurrent households that already surround the PUD development. The Linden City Council has a responsibility for these hundred and thirty households, properties, safety, protection, and well-being. In your decision you make, I ask that you reflect on this. Since the approval of a preliminary site plan on February fifth, two thousand twenty-four, until the February third of two thousand twenty-five, when the Linden Planning Commission approved the site, final site plan for the PUD, very little has changed in regard to Forest Ridge Glen's main concern. The concerns, requirements, and issues with Forest Glen's HOA have been ignored and dismissed as not important. On February third of two thousand twenty-five, RAGDIX condition number six addresses the A requirement of Forest Ridge Glen's HOA that Lower Lane be protected in the construction process. Conditions number one and two and three should all have been, instead of reading authorized before authorized construction, should have read prior to the approval of the Linden City Council. In the fifteen weeks since the approval, the following requirements have been ignored and dismissed as if not important. Katie and Eric's home, lot forty-one, Allison and Hutton's home, lot forty. Eric has spoken in the public meetings and Allison has wrote letters stating that no one was going to remove the fences and fill their backyards. Yet this still is on the plan for the Linden City Commission to be approved tonight. None of the requirements for the detention basin modified Forest Ridge Glen's has been, been changed on the plan. The detention basin changes that we requested before was the three board height be at eight hundred and seventy-three feet above seawall. The hundred year rainstorm event would be at eight seventy-two. And the two-year twenty-four hour storm event would be at eight hundred and sixty-nine and a half feet. We also talked about no fifteen inch control tee on the outlet and change fifteen inch PVC pipe to twenty-four inches from stand pipe one and stand pipe two. And regarding the new detention basin, you should know how the water flows in and how the water flows out. Before being approved by the city council, the engineering should be done and the performance guarantees completed. The Linden City Council should be aware that the hundred and thirty current households need to protect their homes. And prior to the Linden City Council approval, cost sharing agreement for the use of Forest Ridge Glen's roads, Lower Lane for future access to the thirty planned homes, the cost sharing agreement for the maintenance and repair of the storm sewer system included detention basin should also be done before approval.
Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you. Justin Collins?
Justin Collins, the retention charm. So I want to express that I'm not against houses being built back there. I am tired of seeing Carter back there, glass shatter back there, people doing things they shouldn't be back there. It's not watched enough, and we only have so many officers, they can't be out there all, all the time. But i- it's become just a trash house for everybody. So I'm in favor of seeing something done there. But as these other people have said, you've got a duty to protect your citizens now. We are your employers, you have a job to protect us. So like they have asked, if you start doing, if you approve this, I would like to have a cash deposit for the houses that are in the Cold Lane that are already flooding, where people are running, like it's been said, where sub pumps don't shut off. The city lot houses we built there, they shouldn't have. They should have said, no, this doesn't work, no, you can't put a, 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 a pavilion basement. I went into some of these houses when they were still being built and had to shove the crotts back down in the ground. They were floating out of the ground because there's so much water. We're not talking about inches, we're talking about feet of water. Where they got the HDAC sub mounted from underneath the floor and it's submerged in water. These are houses and designs the city approved and allowed to be built in these same wetlands. So what are you gonna do to protect us there? Furthermore, I'd like to know why the planning commission's requirement like using Lower Lane isn't being respected. I understand their concern, and I'm gonna defend my neighborhood as well. They had needed access to that road, that is their road. If they come down my road, I'm at the corner of one of the intersections and I send a picture to the niece. A typical day, I can look out and there's a dozen kids playing at the intersection that all this construction trucks have come through. So I would request, at least if they come down Adrian Avenue, a bond for the repair. It's be given a passer score by a third party, not some of the city of Linden. I believe the city of Linden intentionally rated our road as a two, which has failed. That way they can easily get a special assessment later after this is all said and done. So whatever's done, if you want to create, I, I'd like to have a third party tell us the, the status of the road. And I'd like it to come up one level above that. Otherwise, there's no point in him dumping money into a road to put it back to what's considered a failed state, then have the taxpayers spend money to fix it, and then have us spend money in special assessment to fix it again. Secondly, with these construction trucks coming down where all these kids are, I would hope the city would put a special speed limit or requirement to limit them to fifteen mile an hour. The first time, make this clear, the first time I hear a truck slamming the brakes because of a kid, and again, kids are gonna be kids. The first time it is, I will barricade my freaking neighborhood, I will fight anybody tooth and nail. I will defend these kids, just like when I got a teacher fired from Linden Schools for making threats against schools, or through kids.
Thank you.
Do you have one more comment? Since I'm speaking for Forest Ridge, I get ten minutes, right?
Are there any other residents here from Forest Ridge? That want to speak? That want to speak?
Who wants to speak?
Justin, just be clear, if he speaks, you're done.
So can I speak then?
Then you need to.
Do you mind if I go ahead and go so I can finish what I wanted to bring up?
You can't come up afterwards.
So something I've talked to Don about, and I just spoke with him about, we have a drain.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Go ahead, address that.
Okay, all right, so here's, here's the deal. Your three minute time was up, okay?
I thought you had said it was for Forest Ridge.
Three minute, your three minute time is personal.
Yes.
Your time would be as a group. If he's speaking as a resident of Forest Ridge, you are not representing.
I wrote Forest Ridge on there that I'm speaking as Forest Ridge.
We're explaining. If he speaks, if this gentleman wants to speak as Forest Ridge, then you're not representing all of Forest Ridge. He gets his three minutes as a person.
Can I get him two minutes?
No, we can't leave time to this.
John has done that in the past, most of all.
I just want to further, there are, as everybody else is saying, is that, so I'm one oh eight Nicole. My name's Brendan. My house is one of the last houses to be built, built in this whole area. And again, I did nothing but fight in my basement for the year and some change that I've been in it with the water coming in. I think the fastest that the pumps turned off, or the slowest, sorry, that they turned off were with about three to five seconds, just enough to fill back up and go back out. I'm again going through two sub pumps. They did get refurbished, sent back to me. I've had to clean out the pipes several times over due to the water. And adding more houses in the backyard of that, adding to my ponds will increase that for me and then also for them. For instance, the water that, or the land that they're building already is covered in water. I mean, it's leaking into the road right now. And, and either. And I'm just saying that we also need to protect the wetlands and all this added construction and water may give it worse for everybody around here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other residents who wish to speak on the PUD? Going once? Going twice? Brendan?
Madam Mayor, did you catch Brendan's address? I did not. Brendan, your address?
One oh eight. Sorry, can I get?
Yes.
Everybody do their public speaking.
That's okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Brendan, do you have any questions about the PUD?
I guess what are they gonna do about the water issue?
Well, we've heard some things here tonight, I didn't, didn't know about his basement filling with water. I just want to make sure that what we're doing is causing more harm to the residents. I, I know we've gone over this quite a few times, and the answer's always been no, we're not causing further harm. We can't do anything about what happened thirty years ago. But I just wanted to put that out on the table because I really don't want to cause any more harm. And my question is, there are quite a few of them that said something about putting money aside for their roads. We have an agreement with the builder to help with the roads, so I'm not quite sure what we can do there, but that, that's kind of where I see it.
Madam Mayor, I do think the applicant is here, and so I think it would be appropriate to allow him to speak on behalf of the.
I figured. Mr. Namer, would you like to come up and speak?
Thanks.
Sir, can you tell me if the microphone's on? Is it great meeting?
Yeah, it's on. I, I know there's a lot of concerns about water and whatnot, and I know last time we've been, we've been talking about this for well over a year now. We're creating a secondary detention system to help capture all this water, especially coming back from behind. Nicole, and the existing detention system is also going to be modified based on Jersey County specs and Dave's, I'm working with Dave as well, to make sure that we are not creating any more problem than what it already exists. And as a matter of fact, helping solve some, quite a bit of the existing problems, especially all the ones I'm quoting. Because now that water has somewhere. Because now that water has somewhere to go with that secondary detention system. And I know we just briefly talked, where's Justin? Just briefly talked to Justin. They got a detention system that in the event we might be able to do something with that, work together with their association as well. If, if he's what brought it to my attention, if that's something we were entertaining, if, if that would help alleviate any additional problems for, for, for all of us.
The, the last time we met, he talked about money and reserving money, a proportion, a percentage of funds to fix the road. Do their, I can't remember what the percent was. Does anyone remember, anyone remember how much that was? Because when they're asking for something, I think we already have, that's my point. We already have an agreement to, to take care of the roads when they're finished.
So specifically to performance guarantees, I can actually let Adam, Adam, do you mind talking specifically about the performance guarantees in that process and percentages?
I can, I wonder if the question though, speaking to the, the allocation based on the number of units that, that go onto the future maintenance, I think probably the applicant or the applicant's attorney can speak to that specific question, I think that's what she's asking for.
Thanks.
We do have.
So we don't have it currently because we're not there yet, we don't have engineer estimates.
Yeah, we're not, we're not at that point, like we started saying.
Okay, good, that's fine, thank you.
I'm Jordan Rising, county applicant's attorney on Grand Line, Michigan. I don't know what yours is.
Sir, can you adjourn your way to someplace? It's okay.
A sauce spoken attorney. I'm four zero, general south side, St. Sweetie, Grand Line, Michigan. We were here last time and there was six conditions that the planning commission had mentioned. And I just, so the first one were fine, they were great, perfect for this development. The sixth one I suggested, moving over to Andrea from Laura, the reason is Andrea's a public road and forcing us to post security and doing a sort of a fore and after study with engineering boards, even if you have to cordon a little bit to see what it's like. Photographs, so that we can actually visually see it before and after. Maybe the engineer suggested a method of doing that. It would be done by an independent person, not us, that, you know, you don't want to trust our photographs, you want to trust a third party, independent verifier. So we would post the security necessary to make sure that any damage that we did to Andrea would in fact be repaired. There's the last thing you want to do is after developers either say, now you owe us some money and he doesn't end anything up there, so you're basically, it's posting rights. It's a little word for a bond. So the, as far as Laura, Attorney Stavratsky represents the Glen's Association. And he and I have been discussing this, as a matter of fact, we are now with four issues, three of which we agree on, and one we just have to look at dancing on, and then we'll probably be in agreement. But that's on Laura. We wanted to do construction traffic to Andrea because it is a public road, we don't want to damage Laura Lane, Laura Lane is below par, as the gentleman suggested, Andrea is not. And so we don't want to make Laura any worse than it is. Take construction traffic over that during the final period would be, would be bad for the residents. And so we want to basically ban construction traffic from Laura Lane. In addition, we've, one of the four issues we talked about, the issues were basically this, the initial construction of Laura Lane to bring it up to cover, up to specs, so that they have a decent load in there. We weren't the ones who didn't build it, some prior developers twenty-two years ago. So that's one of the issues between Attorney Stavratsky and I. The, the second issue regarding the road, as far as entrance amenities, we pretty much agreed on that. As far as future maintenance of Laura Lane, we're pretty much agreed on that, we've done, we've agreed in concept, kind of a phasing of contributions toward Laura Lane based upon the numbers of certificates of occupancy that we issued for these states. And then finally detention, we're talking about doing a phasing on that too. That is, there would be thirty units in the states, forty, forty-nine units in Glendale, seventy-nine units. Every time a unit came online in the states, we would take one more point out of that seventy-nine as our burden. So when one CFO's issues were paying one, seven-nine, and two, 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 seven-nine, we may even kind of jack that to be one fifty, two fifty firsts as we add these units on. So, because then if we put more of the burden on us, they have the denominator different than seventy-nine. Because one over forty, one over fifty is a greater amount than one over seventy-nine, so that puts more of the burden on us. Attorney Stavratsky and I will work all those issues out, but they're purely small anyway. And then about detention, entrance amenities and Laura Lane, future improvements or future maintenance of Laura Lane. The only thing we're stuck on right now is the initial construction or reconstruction of Laura Lane. What we don't want to do is take on the burden of repairing the road that we didn't construct, that is, basically reconstructing the road that we didn't construct in the first place. Had we constructed it even twenty-two years ago, it'd be different, then we would be responsible. And I know a lot of things slipped through, you know, twenty years ago, Mr. Parker and I were putting the core projects in Drummond and anybody else in the county. And a lot of the times the title companies were asking, es- es- eschewage in some of these projects were not eschewing sufficient funds to cover the must be built areas, road being one of them. And a lot of those type of companies aren't even in business anymore. So, and then the cities just weren't able to keep up with the amount of development that was going on. And so they weren't getting, a lot of the highest were not getting payment costs. And so the bonds that people had promised, the financial assurances that people had promised, just wouldn't be posted. Different this time. It's different now, we're not, we're not putting in one million per day, we're putting one, two, three per year.
Thank you, yes, sir.
If any of you have questions about that, you, now you need to answer that.
I'm sorry, there's one more thing. This information's being shared with the residents, right, through their association and?
This just coming up, he sent me a letter before we were invited. You know, I'm sure they haven't heard the response yet.
Okay, I get that.
Yeah, yeah, obviously the response up.
Yes. Now can just go ahead and stay right there, that way the council will pay our questions for you, whomever it's going to ask.
I have a couple of questions. How come we're not bonding both lanes, Laura Lane and Andrea, so that they're both, they're both there, they both get that maintenance after this work is all done?
Well, if you look at the condition imposed that the planning commission wanted imposed, they did not want us to use Andrea at all. They said Laura Lane solely for construction traffic. That, that's exactly the opposite of what should happen. We should use Laura Lane because it's built to handle construction traffic. Laura Lane just won't handle it immediately, and we'll be very upset with construction traffic coming on the road and ruining it. It'll ruin it very fast. And so what you're essentially asking by posting bond for Laura Lane is, Mr. need reconstruct Laura Lane even though you had nothing to do with its, with that construction.
And the other thing is, once this, once this gets to the other next step, then the Genesee County Drain Commission can help step in and look at some of that drainage issues and clear up some of these problems, which has been a problem because we can't get to the next step.
Oh, there are so many things, if you said rubber stamp, if you said you're approved, this is just the beginning, we have so many other things to do. The county drain won't even look at it until they have approval at, at this level, for the site. And until county draining approves it, we can't start constructing infrastructure and we can't start constructing houses until we have our infrastructure.
That's my whole point. We need to move ahead so you can get that infrastructure in place to, to ease up this water. Because that is a huge concern.
The catch twenty-two that I, I didn't invent, but county says, let the locals do their stuff first, then we'll need to look at it, kind of the same way. That's the way it works, so we all do that, that way.
Is it Laura Lane or Andrea Avenue that you're going to proceed for?
Andrea Avenue is where we're planning on, through the board, Andrea Avenue is where we're going for our construction traffic. We do not want, we will tell all of our contract makers and we will enforce it, we have somebody on the site all the time. The county is Laura Lane, they're going to have to pay a price.
And you'll be posting signs?
Yes, yes.
What's going to happen to the big holes that are around the catch basins? The road's just going to fall in on Andrea Avenue?
Is that a question that council asked me?
Madam Mayor, or one of our residents in the audience asked a question?
Can you repeat the question?
We have, around their catch basins, we have these big, huge holes that kids could fall right in. If you start driving equipment over that thing, it's just, the road's going to give out. Like, go look at the road sometime, it's washed out underneath, there's a hole, there's no way it can hold that equipment without just collapsing.
Privilegio in a hole this big but that deep, cut into the road.
And two large catch basins that I know of, one on one corner of Andrea Avenue, Paul Lee Pass, and one on the other.
Ma'am, can you give me a paper so that this, that way this can be addressed, okay? Can you write down your concerns on the contract card? So that that way somebody from the city can look at this and make sure to get back, that where everything is made. Thank you, I appreciate that very much. Okay.
You want to ask me a question?
I would like you to go ahead and, and speak to it.
Yeah, we, we didn't create the one in Andrea Lane, obviously, they're, they're there today. Whether or not we build, whether or not we develop, if you never purchase a land, that issue's going to exist. I don't know how the city plans on dealing with the current condition of Andrea Lane, we do not want to make it worse. To the extent we make it worse, that's where your financial assurance is, is supposed to occur. Let's see, I don't know if there's any plans for anything in the area, just mention.
No.
Okay, so I've heard a lot of concern about the Laura Lane with the fact that this gentleman's finished to completion. If Laura Lane was finished to completion and it was tested, you know, would you at that time be willing to use Laura Lane?
Absolutely, absolutely, I just don't want to make it worse for them, and I guarantee you we'll make it worse for them by taking construction traffic over what's been neglected and what's, what's been categorized as a road that's failing right now. Pick a failing road and drive any traffic over it, it just fails worse.
So if Laura Lane and Andrea Lane were both two standards, are you willing to post bonds for both of those roads to bring them back to the standards using an independent, you know, contractor to look at the, you know, before and after?
Yeah, then you damage responsibility. I mean, and I know you. You're not suggesting that we're responsible for Laura Lane or Andrea, but that we should be responsible for making it worse. If they're, if they're, the county road standards today.
Yes, whatever standard they're at, you're not responsible.
We don't have the right to deny that.
Of the builders or the condition of the current road. Just that what we need to make sure is that those roads are brought up, back up to where they are at the beginning of the construction, you know, at the end of your construction. And then that's what the bonds would be, be in place for, is just to make, to protect the residents and their streets.
Are, are you referring to Andrea? Or which one are you referring to? Because I mean, to get them both up to standards, I think.
It'll, it'll never happen.
Laura Lane, yeah, Laura Lane is, is currently, I know they didn't get their top coat put on and that was the original contractor. If Laura Lane, the original statement was, if Laura Lane was to bring their road up and get it finished to standards, county standards, would you be willing to put a bond up for that road? As long as that was done before construction started?
Well, that is, yes, answer your question simply yes, that's a big if. I mean, that's, it is a big, but yes, that means they're going to end up paying for it and I don't know if that's going to happen. I mean, you know.
I, I know, I know it's been discussed. I, I know that it's been discussed that, that they were, they would have their, rebuild their road, bring it up to standard. But if it was at county standards, you would be willing to post a bond saying you'd bring it back?
We were, we're willing to do that for, for Andrea, so yes, can you take a motion? Yes, absolutely.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Rising, just so we're clear on this, your original suggestion, as I understood it, were subsequent suggestions that you would limit your construction traffic to Andrea Lane. You were going to, in addition to limiting traffic on that, you're going to be inspecting it before you start and bring it up the same standard after you get done.
We're going to have an independent person inspect it.
Right.
And you hire, we'll hire.
And you're willing to make that same concession for the private road that will inspector, you'll find inspector now and you make sure it doesn't come back up, but at the same time, not allow construction traffic in the private road?
No, not, no. Not, we would not allow construction traffic on that road, so we're not, we're not kind of causing any damage here, we're not going to use the road. I think a gentleman here said, if, if they brought it up to county road standards, then why would you do the same for Laura as you did for Andrea, I suppose we would?
But at that point, we're saying you expect them to use both roads for construction traffic, if that were the case.
Or tell us which one you want us to use at that point.
And we'll have a development agreement, a promise that you're not going to use construction traffic.
The development agreement, I sent to Mr. Gilder, the Rising, on the agreement on April thirtieth. And I did recite the Andrea Lane provisions that we discussed last time in there. Long lanes, wide open stairs, pick up Laura Lane, we don't, we just want to get it.
I have no questions on this.
So Andrea, you will get independent, third party to assess those waters?
You will get them, we will pay them.
Okay, not me. Um, your traffic going down there, I know, I've driven down Andrea, I've driven down Laura, and you got lots of kids. Would you object to fifteen mile an hour? And all your builders agree to that?
We're, we're going to have subcontractors, everyone, everyone, if you want us to post your construction traffic, if you want us to arrange, we'll do it.
Fifteen?
You said, I think you said fifteen.
Fifteen.
Well, my, 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 I just want to interject here, if, I mean, this is a city, Lynn, you guys post it, you guys post it, you make it legal, you make it law, and whoever breaks the law, based off of the consequences of, of your wrath.
Not on Laura Lane. I would have to ask, please chief.
Yeah, real quickly, can't post the law below twenty-five miles an hour, primed patient, and if the attorney hired it.
Once again, you, you tell us how to do it, and we'll, we'll do as much as we can here.
I think, um, I think that we really need to be mindful of what all these people want to do. And I, I know you are, I know you are. And I think that if, whatever we decide, there's another hurdle, many hurdles are going to go through to make this right.
Mr. Parker would tell you, in two thousand two, everybody was a developer. Anybody that had a couple hundred thousand dollars was a developer.
Right.
And nobody knew what they were.
Absolutely. It's hard because I don't want to see either one of these projects and these people, like they said, they have a hundred and thirty people that are there and somebody hurt them, hurt them bad by what the conditions of, they're behind their homes. And I know both are going to take a pay a leap with every one of you, however this goes. So I hope you stand by your word. Thank you.
Everybody's going back to part of the trailer, I'm actually looking at the development agreement in front of me because I have language that everybody's been asking for, that you provided, Mr. Gilder, Mr. Gilder provided it for us. But for the audiences worried about drainage, prior authorization of construction, detailed engineering plan shall be submitted to the city's engineer to review and ensure that I inserted the road engineering letter dated January twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-five, in the direction of detention basins and such. Genesee County has the final authority on drainage. We can't dictate it one way or the other, the freeboard flow, any of that, we can't dictate that as a city, that's Genesee County Drain Commissioner has that final authority. Prior authorization of construction, documentation, outside agency permits, drainage, eagle, wetlands, have been secured and submitted. Prior authorization of construction, performance guarantee should be submitted to the city's Prior to authorization of construction, performance guarantee should be submitted to the city in accordance with section one five four point zero two seven to ensure completion of all improvements associated with proposed development to these streets, lighting, utilities, sidewalks, drainage, and landscaping. The term infrastructure construction means excavation and destruction of roads, sanitary sewer mains, and stormwater management systems. Water mains, main electric and gas lines, under development infrastructure shown in the final approved site plan. All vehicles and equipment shall use only, and this is the either or. We've got, right now we can go Laura or we can go Andrea, depending on which way the board decides to go. So substitute either Laura or Andrea, and shall not use the other. In connection with all the construction, construction from the commencement of the pro. From the commencement of new infrastructure construction to completion of new infrastructure construction on the property, prior commencement of infrastructure construction, the developer shall engage a paper qualified engineer for performance or observational before and after studies, including photographs, catalog, or written report of conditions of Andrea or Laura. Prior commencement of the construction and comparative conditions upon completion of the construction. Compared observational before after study shows construction traffic caused substantial damage to the road, then the developer shall repair the damage at the moment's expense. Prior commencement of construction, developer shall post active performance bond or other financial assurances with the city. The security developer's obligations under this provision, the fee on some of which shall be no less than the agreed reasonable amount determined by the city and developer that will be sufficient to repair the road as set forth above. Thank you, Derek.
That covers it.
Covers it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for entertaining my question, I appreciate it. I don't have this new permit, thank you.
The only thing I wanted to add is that, um, I know we can't change the speed limit. Thanks, Scott. And can you, we asked for, can you do a voluntary lead speed reduction while you're out there?
We, I, I would definitely make mention to, like, everyone, everyone under my, my supervision will, will know what, what they shouldn't and should not be doing. I mean, that's, that's, other than that, that's, I don't know what else to say to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right, I have, I have some questions now. I'm sorry about the length of time that this has taken, but, okay. So Don, um, I'm gonna ask you directly, because we have talked briefly about this. Um, what is the Peso rating currently on Andrea Avenue?
Before coming to the meeting, I looked at the county site and they had it rated from a one to a four. So it, it depends on various sections, uh, throughout the roadway there. So there's been sections that are one, so failed, and then sections that are in the fourth.
That's what I was gonna ask, if you can explain that briefly so that everybody understands. Um, what, what, what is a four? What is that?
I wish I had the proper information. So, so the scale is basically from a, from a one to ten, and you rate it just like you do people? So, uh, a, a ten is, is really the best you can get, and a one is considered failed. So, a, a ten would be a brand new road essentially, and, and a one is a completely failed road. I think the fail starts at about three, three, and, and falls off to the one. And then there's fair that are in the range between, uh, four and six or seven, and then seven and twelve, which are excellent.
So, if I'm understanding correctly, and I wanna make sure I am, Andrea Avenue in various spots is between a one, which is failed, and a four?
That's, that's what is out of the county site, that's of two thousand twenty-three. But that's the importance of, of conducting a current Peso rating so that you know the condition that it is in prior to construction start.
Okay. Yeah, Andrea? Next, I thought that this had been addressed, but I wanna make sure that it absolutely has. Um, the berm in the backyards of Laura Lane residence, I thought that it was my understanding that that is no more. There's no more berm, no more conversations of berms, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, that is correct.
Okay.
We, we added that secondary detention system, we added a secondary detention system which. A little more interesting, yeah, yeah.
All right, um, the next question that I have is, and I don't know, I'm good at ping pong this one too. Um, one of the residents spoke about a twenty-four foot buffer for the wetlands from homes. I just need to know, 'cause I'm not a wetlands person, is that true?
Our ordinance, our zoning ordinance does not require a wetland setback from any structure, but any structure to be built if it's, uh, located within a wetland area would require an eagle permit for any disturbance within a wetland.
Thank you, and then the, um, the easement, and I don't know who wants to talk on this one. Um, so the, the original needed easement that was discussed in the planning commission about Laura Lane. Can someone, who wants to speak on that? I would like to know more information about that.
I can, I can. Yes, now, when the glands was, um, first put in, it was anticipated that estates would be an expansion of the glands. And it wasn't gonna be called the estates, it's probably supposed to be part of the same project. Even under the Michigan County Act, you can reserve the right to expand the project, but you have to, you have to pull the trigger on the expansion within six years. If you don't pull it within six years, for example, as happened here with the glands, the estates would otherwise be landlocked, or the land that comprises the estates would be landlocked. So what developers do, they don't wanna commit, the original developer didn't want to commit to doing estates, what the land that is the estates, they don't wanna expand the project, because the river project is doing that in the County Act. So he reserves the right to expand, and says if I don't expand, then I'm giving that land easements over the glands roads and over the glands utility connections. And many times in master deeds, as a matter of fact, I've been on every master deed I've drafted, probably everyone that Mr. Parker drafts, you say that this expansion area is gonna share the expenses of maintenance of the roads. This particular master deed did not have that language in there. And usually, the master deed will say, you're gonna share in expenses, and it's gonna be your, your share of this expansion, and that will be the number of units there over the number of total units that are serviced by the road. And this particular one, the developer of that original project, did not retain, he retained the right for the easement, but did not give the glands the right to charge the estates for that. That's just come around, it's been there. And as I say, if you received a letter in this afternoon very late, had four points in it, and three of them are pretty much there, and the fourth one was just having to discuss how to handle the mission of construction on Laura Lane. Your statement.
All right, so, um, I'm gonna sum it up with, it is mine, and I, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding this. What I'm seeing is, is that we have Peso ratings on the city road of one to four, which is not great. We have Laura Lane, is that which we also equally know, are not great. So either way we go, we are dealing with roads that I don't even know that can handle, but this kind of traffic with three to five years.
Well, there's really two types of construction traffic. You're gonna be at infrastructure construction, which is done very quickly. Then you're gonna have houses built, that would, that would be part of the five years of construction. Lot later is traffic, getting construction traffic, but still construction traffic.
Twenty years later?
Thank you. Ma'am, did you still have another question?
Just that the state of Michigan doesn't have a setback for wetlands, it's up to local ordinances?
Any further discussion on this item, anyone?
I have some more questions.
What will happen to the development on Laura Lane and all those who are having problems with flooding? With what you're gonna do, do they have, um, any? Is there gonna be more flooding in their area? Are you gonna try to reduce?
I think it's gonna be just the opposite, actually, I'm confident it's gonna be just the opposite. By, with, with, discussing with Nicole, um, all that water right now has nowhere to go. And with us creating that second detention system, we are picking up not only the water, on part of our, on part of our road system, but everything coming off of Nicole will be put into the secondary system. Once that reaches certain heights, then it will overflow into the, the main detention, the main detention system, which is currently existing. Keep in mind, like, like George, just, Mr. Isaac just said, the estates were supposed to be a continuation of the glands, that it just never got developed. So the detention system that's currently there was supposed to handle the entire, uh, the entire development. And because now that there, there are, uh, water lock, there's, the water that's locked that has, that is not getting to its, to its designated spot, um, we're resolving that issue, for sure. Uh, especially in the back part there, around on the coal, that, all that, all that water will be picked up and, 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 and drained properly. So we know for a fact that that is going to alleviate a lot of the water issues, especially in that area.
Okay, thank you.
Can I respond to that?
Unfortunately, and I'm sorry, because we've already done.
The technical.
So I'm sorry.
Look, we, we trust, we trust your engineers to do what they want. Right, it's not my word that you're taking for it, it's just, I, I, you know, my, I'll, I'll just sound a little bit to that. It's not my word that you're taking for it. It's, it's the city engineers, it's Genesee County engineers, you're taking their word for it. Obviously, this right here is, is the, the process of the site plan. And then again, like, 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 uh, Brad, you just mentioned, oh, there are several other hurdles that we have to go through, permitting that we have to go through, and the main one will be, uh, Genesee County waterways. So you're not, you're not taking my word for anything, you're, you're taking Genesee County's word for it, as well as, uh, David's word for it, he's gonna be looking at the same plans and approving them as well.
At a previous meeting, a builder in here said that if the water table is higher and we're surprised by it, we might put in two some pumps in some houses, or not have basements in others.
Thank you.
The whole point of this discussion is that this has gotta go forward because Genesee County Drain Commission's whole point there is to address problems caused by flooding and inadequate drainage systems. Once this gets beyond the point we're discussing, they can step in and help these people.
Right.
It's appropriate to make a motion.
I, I will make a motion that we approve this PUD with all the stipulations that the planning commission put in place, in addition, using Laura, or Andrea, and also with expediency to the Genesee County Drain Commission to eliminate this flooding condition.
Ma'am, clarification? Ma'am, I have an area here. That using Andrea in place of Laura, Andrea is, Andrea is the sole construction traffic driver? This will be in the development agreement, I wanna make sure it's, it's one or the other.
You can, you can update it if you want, because.
Why, if I'm, I'm just asking, it's one, it's in the, it goes in the development agreement. It's one or the other or both, what, what's your motion?
I make a motion that they, that if they're going to bond Andrea, then we go with Andrea. Can you please recede the motion? I make a motion that we go forward and approve this development with all the planning commission's stipulations in place, and with the updating of the, um, number six as Laura Lane. Replace that with Andrea Lane, with the, with the stipulation that they are going to bond that. I don't need to add a part about Genesee County Commission on that. With the expediency to get this through the process, where the Genesee County Drain Commission can step in and help.
That's still supported by conference items?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
Thanks?
Yes.
Armstrong?
No.
Miller?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
They say it doesn't matter.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda is water rate destructure.
Ben Amerin, City Council, um, at the last meeting, we had a review, uh, with Cody Killian from PMM. He is here tonight to answer any questions, uh, from City Council. Um, and tonight we're looking for direction on what City Council would like us to do, um, based on the rate analysis. So, Brody is gonna be sitting way up there to the.
Hello, everybody, good to see you again. You hear me okay?
Yes.
So, um, really tonight, I'm here to, I guess, summarize what was presented a couple weeks ago with our recommendation. And, um, if you recall, we walked you through a few different scenarios and ultimately ended up with a couple options. Option one being holding rates where they are right now. It's not the age level. And option two would be to adjust the rate mix now, uh, which would require an increase in the usage rate in, in adjustments to the base fee and debt fee. Ultimately, I think it's best to keep rates where they are, a whole scenario at this point. And the rationale behind that, and I, and I should, should state that we recommend that with the caveat, the council will have to revisit this next year, and will have to increase rates further or remix the rate structure. It'll likely require a combination of those two. But given that we have a switch over to the county system, excuse me, we think the rationale that supports this is having a little more time to collect some more data points, in particular, the usage on the new system. We potentially could have upwards of a whole year of usage data between now and May of next year, when we come back to the, uh, to the council with, um, you know, a, a formal recommendation. Um, we would have a, a better understanding of the capital project prioritization. Those are the long-term capital projects that also need to have an identification of funding sources, whether it be through bonds or through hopefully some grants that the city administration and the, the council have been working on. I think it's prudent to give yourselves a little bit more time. We should have, um, word on, on what those funds, if any, may be by that point. And so that'll give us another data point to better inform projecting of what the future debt service will be. I think would also give, um, you know, the administration and council some more time to evaluate, like, call them key performance indicators, or looking at some of the other critical, um, call them financial statistics that we wanna see the system run by, in particular, uh, having the appropriate days cash on hand to meet a minimum rating, uh, per the credit rating agencies. And then just overall, giving yourselves a little bit of. And then just overall, giving yourselves a little bit of time to adjust to the new water system, see what that might be from the standpoint of infrastructure upgrades that may come as a result of that. I know the pressure has been increasing and so far, so good. But just having a little more time behind you, I think, gives everyone, including your, you know, your taxpayers and customers, more specifically, some time to digest this and, and move forward next year. But it is important to note that the current system, even the existing rate structure, is not sustainable. We will have to revisit the original recommendation, and that will require an increase and potentially a restructuring of that rate structure next year. The other element to this is looking at the billing frequency and, and looking to see if, if we can, um, go forward with potential switch to monthly billing, which the city administration has been looking at as well. So, that is our recommendation. That ties into your twenty-five, twenty-six budget adoption process, and so that's where we're at right now.
Thank you.
Jerry, do you have questions?
I do not.
Not, not questions, but I believe that's good sound judgment to give them to ask. It makes a lot of sense.
The only question is, can we wait until July first? I mean, with our, can we do that?
So internally, as the staff, we've talked about it along with Brody and things like that, um, we feel most comfortable withholding the rates where they're at, uh, for the upcoming budget year for twenty-five, twenty-six, um, with the expectation that we would have to implement, um, the necessary increases at that time and evaluate at that time.
Okay, so we'll have more data, so that doesn't mean that we would, um, in there find any type of decrease of all right? It would be, be the, it would just be the same thing we have now, but we're waiting. We're, we're gonna hold right now and wait to learn more information.
Your twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-six budget is, uh, in front of you here for adoption is based upon the assumptions that you hold rates where they are. In doing so, you will maintain the key critical financial indicators that we like to see, which is, you will maintain that debt service coverage ratio above one point two times, it will be your board policy for fund balance, and you'll have the appropriate days cash on hand.
I think that makes the, the most sense. I was just wondering about next year's budget and our residents, because I don't want people to get the false, um, sense that, the false sense that their rates are where they are now and that's what they're saying, that, well, I can imagine some people saying, oh, okay, this is gonna be my rate.
No, moving forward, we would make, uh, again, we've done this historically, over the past couple of years, we've been doing incremental increases quarterly. Um, and moving forward, though, we're gonna go back to reviewing annually and making any necessary adjustments along in conjunction with the budget.
Okay, so we let our residents know that what we're, that's what we're doing, right? Okay, good. That's all I get. Thank you.
Tom?
I have no questions.
I think it's really important, um, I'm looking at the hold as it is. We have so many things coming down the pipe, hopefully, through state, federal, where we might be able to find some money. Um, so holding where we are, um, it'll give everyone a little bit of, not relief, but no more pain until we get up till next year. And then everybody has to be, you know, realistic. They will have new numbers going forward. So I think it's the best scenario. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Well, said to everyone, the hold, way to go.
Um, and I wanna kind of echo, uh, what Denise said, given some of the appropriation packages that I know have been placed out. And I think those are what you were, were talking about. Um, I believe it's sound judgment to hold until we know what we are going, what we may receive and what difference that may be, be able to make. So, thank you. Do you want to make a motion? Absolutely. So, audience, do y'all have any questions about the rates?
Has the water been turned down yet?
Yes.
Yeah.
Would be nice to know that.
Well, check out your dishes. Your, your glasses are crystal, should be crystal clear now.
Have you not seen the change?
Have you not seen the change? I, I see this significant change. My neighbor has, and several of them.
There's no change. I'm sorry.
I see a change. It's better, it's better.
I think, I think it's where you're at, but I have found a change at my house. I haven't seen it. I think it's just different. Just the, so I'd like to make a motion to hold where we're at for one year.
Support.
For the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Thank you.
Support.
Miller?
Yes.
Simon?
A yes.
How?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Armstrong?
Yes.
We are now moving on to the resol- resolution number zero-seven dash two-five, adoption of the City of Linden fiscal year twenty-two-five, twenty-six budget.
Madam Mayor, in your packet, um, is the draft budget that we are proposing, um, and, uh, the City of Linden operates on a set of financial controls that are established by state law. Um, the city charter also requires, uh, this is also in accordance with the city charter as well. Um, the draft budget was reviewed, um, by the staff with the City Council at prior meetings, uh, noted that the required scheduled public hearing was advertised and posted accordingly. And again, to clarify, um, that does not, uh, you know, we're not proposing a tax rate increase. Um, I know there was some confusion on that. There is no, no tax rate increase, um, that is proposed within this budget. The revenue that we collect in tax revenue, um, and I guess Brooke, maybe this is the time to maybe, uh, talk about the tax revenue and, and the inflationary increases on taxable value.
So correct. Um, we have no recommendation for any additional millages. They will be rolled back due to the headly amendment. Why did your taxable values increase? Proposal A, in headly amendment, limit annual increases to taxable value to lesser than five percent for the consumer price index, the CPI. For twenty-two-five, the CPI was three point one percent. That means every property's taxable value automatically increases by three point one percent. That is across Michigan. Um, proposal A of nineteen ninety-four is what made age that. The revenue increased because property values rose naturally with inflation as allowed under Michigan law. There was no proposal to increase anybody's taxes. It was just due to proposal A and the headly. The, when you see that the tax revenue increased in the budget, that's mainly due to the three point one increase, um, in taxable value, as well as new construction that's come on to the tax roll, um, Dollar General. We had Saddle.
Sandal.
Sandalwood, um, finished their development. That's what was heavily difference, that five percent on the taxable graph and increase.
Thank you.
For that, I see answers to your questions.
And additionally, I have my budget highlight memo in there that covers everything that, um, you know, we've worked on for a substantial amount of time. Um, and, and earlier, we had a couple of comments specific to the budget that I would just like to address. I think I addressed Monica Lerner's comment about the tax rate increase. Additionally, she asked if there was any subcommittee or committee, um, she mentioned that she had seen two city councilors, um, um. So city councilors, again, at, at different times will come in and discuss specific things with me to get, again, gather more information and things like that. So, um, I'm happy to meet with, uh, any individual that wants to come in and gather any additional information that's necessary, um, for them to make an informed decision. We do not have a specific budget committee. Uh, the city charter does require that the city manager, along with staff, prepare, um, and propose a budget, and that's what we've done. And it's a pretty rigorous process that we start, um, this, the new budget that we start working on, I mean, it's a cyclical process, and we start immediately, basically. But, um, our kickoff with staff for, to work on the next proposed budget starts sometime in October. And we go through a pretty, pretty lengthy process to do that. So, um, I really have no further additional to add. If you'd like me to address anything, I'm happy to do that. But tonight, we are looking for a motion to approve the resolution, um, and adoption of the City of Linden fiscal year twenty-two-five, twenty-two-six budget as presented.
Do the residents have any questions about the budget? Yes. For the last time, do the residents have any questions about the budget? Hearing and seeing none, you go to the council.
I will make a motion that we adopt. Oh, sorry. I don't have any questions.
Tom?
I have no question about it.
Denise?
I guess I have, uh, concerns, but I believe that right now, we need to move forward, um, pass this budget. And in the future, I'm hoping that we can, um, set goals and that way, we're seeing progress of the whole city moving forward. Um, I believe that everyone works hard and we need to also look for, um, our citizens in Linden too. Um, but everything I've seen so far, and also, um, I was in, um, Ellen's office, um, with Tom, with Jerry. Um, I went there quite a few times, because I wanna make sure that I get the information I'm looking for and that I can come here well-prepared. Nothing more, nothing less.
Good job.
And I, I'm for you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
No comments this time.
Yes, I mean, me and Denise did go into Ellen's office just to get a better understanding. We, uh, she went and her staff went through line by line, each budget item, and explained, uh, where there were increases, why those increases were made. Um, and, you know, there are some discussions that we would like to have moving forward on to next year's budget that we, we've discussed. Uh, some things we would like to look at, but at this time, um, you know, my questions were answered when I went into her office and wanted explanation of why the increases were made, where they were made. And so, yeah, that's, that's pretty much all I have to say on it. Thank you for your time, and Brooke also.
Hannah?
I don't have any questions. I just believe that the budget presentation made at our last council meeting on the twentieth was very, very adequate and very well done.
Brenda?
I, I agree, Pam. It was very well done. And I'd just like to, um, echo Ellen's comment. Um, and there was a gentleman in the audience earlier who said something about the budget. He was upset. Um, I wanted to make sure he understood that, uh, if he would like to speak with the city manager about the budget, he will have to come to the city and make an appointment. Uh, we don't go out and search our residents down to explain things to them, but very, but our city staff is there whenever you need them, if you wanna ask questions. And also, I wanted to say that, uh, I think you guys did a great job. I sat and looked at that, forgot to bring hard copy, looking here from my notes, but you guys did a really good job putting it together. Thank you.
Um, I wanna thank Ellen and Brooke and Kristen for meeting with me today about the budget, um, really, and everyone. I, I didn't do this earlier, but let me just take a, give a shout out to how many questions y'all answered for me about the budget. So, thank you. Now, that, that's over, I'm sure you're glad. There were lots and lots of questions about the budget, but, um, and that's really all I have. Uh, I kind of echo what Jerry and Denise, next year, um, there might be some, some needs to change some things moving forward, but that's not a this year and this moment.
Listen, everyone, listen. I do wanna say, every one of our workers here work for the money. They do a great job, from the police chief down there, fire, even Don. Especially Don, especially Don. And then all of our work staff. You can't say enough about them. They're, in, as far as a phone call or wanting to go in and talk to Ellen or anyone, um, they're always there, so they do answer the questions. And most of the time, well, most times, except for Don, we do get the answers right away. Thank you.
So is there a motion?
I will make a motion that we approve this, um, City Council approves and adopts this twenty-two-five, twenty-two-six budget to cover the period inclusive of July first, twenty-two-five through June thirtieth, twenty-two-six, as stated. I make a second.
Just to clarify, you're also accepting resolution zero-seven dash twenty-five?
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Armstrong?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Moving on to resolution number zero-eight dash two-five, adoption of the City of Linden fiscal year twenty-two-five, twenty-two-six B schedule.
In addition to the budget, to support, uh, what has been proposed, we have to, uh, also cast a resolution adopting B schedule for the upcoming year. Um, you guys have already addressed how you want the water rates to, to be handled. This, this, this resolution is specific to all other areas. So, just looking for approval tonight, uh, for the B schedule to support the budget, and specifically, resolution zero-eight twenty-five.
Do any residents have any questions on zero-eight twenty-five, the B schedule? And Brad, let's start with you.
No comments.
Denise?
No comments.
Tom?
No comments at this time.
Brenda?
All set.
Karen?
I'm good.
Good, all right. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve resolution number zero-eight twenty-five, adoption of the City of Linden fiscal year twenty-two-five, twenty-two-six B schedule.
How?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
Armstrong?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
And, um, I just want to make the statement, Ms. Miller is having to leave due to a family emergency. So, just so that everyone is aware of that.
Hicks?
All right. Um, next is resolution number zero-nine dash two-five, authoring, authorizing the compensation for all city officers, employees, and volunteer fire department.
Madam Mayor, City Council, um, in front of you is also a resolution authorizing the compensation, uh, for the city officers, employees, and, and volunteer fire department. Um, in the resolution, you'll see that it does address that this resolution supersedes any preceding resolutions which may have conflicting language and does not apply to any employee with a collective bargaining agreement or contract. Specifically, that's our police department, and their collective bargaining agreement, um, was adopted last year. Um, and it is a four-year, four-year contract, and we're in second year for that. So this is specific to all land union. Um, and this is what we had proposed and recommended within the body of the, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
Do the residents have any comments or questions on resolution number zero-nine two-five? Hearing and seeing none.
Yep.
Thank you. Did you have a drink?
Somebody attended.
Thank you.
Thank you. Janet, can you please let Denise know that we'll be playing for her?
Yeah.
All right, um, let's start off with, hey, any questions on the comments?
I, I no comments, just, uh, I offer my prayers for Denise and her family.
Jerry?
No comments.
Brad?
No.
No comments at this time.
All set, okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion to accept resolution number zero-nine dash two-five, authorizing the compensation for all city officers, employees, and volunteer fire department.
Support.
Hicks?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Armstrong?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
Moving on to resolution number ten dash twenty-five, adoption of fiscal year twenty-two-five, twenty-two-six purchasing resolution.
Madam Mayor, City Council, um, in front of you is purchasing resolution. There is no changes recommended. This is required for us to do annually in conjunction with the budget and. and outlines the expectation for our purchasing. Looking for approval for resolution 10-25 tonight to support the 2025, 26.
Do any residents have any questions about resolution number 10-25, adoption of fiscal year purchasing resolution? Hearing and seeing none. Start with you, Tom. Do you have any questions?
No questions.
Brenda?
All set, thanks.
Pam?
No questions.
Jerry?
No questions.
No questions.
Very good. Is there a motion?
I will make a motion that we adopt resolution 10-25, adoption of the fiscal year 2025, 2026 purchasing resolution.
I said it.
Armstrong?
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
And I believe that takes us to the manager's update.
We've covered a lot of, a lot of ground tonight. Thank you all for your patience and appreciate each one of you. So, I don't have a ton. I sent out an update on Friday that referenced some appropriations that we did apply for. We had heard from Rubik's office that our project is one of 15 that is being recommended. It's very early in the process. I'm not sure where we're going to shake out with that. But we'll remain hopeful and keep our fingers crossed that it's a positive. So we'll continue to, you know, monitor that as it moves through each step. As well, additionally, in my update, I think I included this information about repairs to the dam. If you guys seen the equipment, it wasn't anything related to the mill. It was specific to the dam. I was able to meet with resident Monica Lerner last week in my office and hopefully close the loop on some of the items that she had outstanding. And again, I guess I'll just reiterate, I'm always happy to meet with any resident or any city councilor. That's my job, and try to address any concerns that may come up. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any city attorney update tonight?
No city attorney update tonight. I want to make one comment. I've been doing this for a long time. I've been to a lot of meetings. And this is the largest city council packet I've ever received.
Oh, really quick, Madam Mayor, we are going to have the Memorial Day celebration coming up, and we are going to be needing some volunteers to help make that happen. So I think what we'll do is circulate maybe a sign-up genius or at least an email correspondence to ask for volunteers for that day. It's a great, great community.
Saturday, right?
No, it would be a Monday.
It would be a Monday.
Monday, yeah. So it's a great community event that we are able to, you know, put on at Noam Charge, and it's a concert and just a picnic. So we'll be circulating some emails to help, look for volunteers for that from the city council.
Thank you. All right. The department reports were all included. Do y'all have anything you would like to add tonight? Just figured I'd ask. Okay, council comments. So here we go. Tonight, I'm going to start with Pam.
Okay, so I have, I just have a few brief ones, but our Parks and Rec meeting is this Thursday, 6 o'clock here. So come and join us with your thoughts about what we're going to be doing this summer. We're doing cornhole, cornhole next week, Thursday. Thursday's at the park. It's our first event, 6 o'clock, and so it'll be, it'll be a lot of fun. Hope to see you there.
Carrie?
I have no comments at this time.
Brenda?
Just a couple. I already gave you guys one. Oh, someone had said something about someone in the, in the street asking for money, and it said, know the law. That was the white cane team, and what they do is, what they do is advocate for the crosswalk laws that protect the blind. So that's what they were doing out in the streets. Just so that you know, I talked to them to find out what they were doing. I think Monica had said something about that out there in the street. And then, oh, again, with the communication devices. It doesn't matter who we are on council, we use our communication devices while we're in the meeting. Just a reminder to everybody that we're not emailing, texting, and planning vacation. We're actually looking at the agenda and information, so, to support you. That's all, yeah.
Tom?
I have no comments. Thank you.
Just a couple tonight, and Mr. Collins is gone, but we reiterated about pace ratings for roads. The City of Linden doesn't, we don't do the pace ratings, the county does those for us. That's something the county provides. Even though we, our city government, we do have a lot of control over what happens in the city. A lot really depends on county. The county has control over drainage. They got the final authority, and they can, drainage, they do the pace ratings of the roads. They control a lot of the ways we have to do things at our level. It's not that we don't want to do things, it's that we can't do things. There are great, great suggestions that came out of some of the residents from Forest Ridge, Lynn's and Forest Ridge. It's just that we can't actually enforce them at the city level. It's a county thing. So our engineers will be working with the county, and we'll stay on that. And that was suggestions that we made at planning permission. We actually made them reevaluate the entire site for drainage. Our road engineering went back through and looked at the entire site with the five wetlands areas. We had the wetlands areas resurveyed, required a lot of things. That's why it took a year and a half to get that back to us, to get that even approved at this level. The other thing is, is at any time during that year and a half, Mr. Neumer could have said, I'll build 28 houses in there instead of 32. At that point in life, the plant unit development would have went away, and we wouldn't have any say at all. So we got more from them by allowing him to reconfigured the land and build than we could have, we can enforce more than if he just were to build regular houses like anyone else outside of a PUD.
I want to thank you guys for that explanation, because that was kind of where I was going tonight, so thank you for that. And I want to thank our police officers in the city, chief setter, inform you that this is Police Appreciation Week. Am I right on that?
Absolutely.
So everyone.
Madam Mayor, it's specifically for those who died in the 2013. So remember them, especially their families. If families and friends are breathing still today, it's a, it's a very good place.
Thank you. And that concludes my comments. And now we have a closed session this evening?
Yes, and Madam Mayor, here, before we go into closed session, I would recommend that we could move down to the annex similar to the, as we did before.
We did the, take care of the students?
Yeah, we can take your students before we go into closed session.
All right, so you can vote.
For the record, if I could, the council is allowed to enter closed session to discuss privileged communications, which includes a letter dated May 9th from Mike Gilder, the city attorney, and that would be the purpose for me to move into closed session.
Thank you.
We will be closed session.
All right, so do we have a motion to move into closed session?
I'll move.
Support.
And we go into closed session at 8:29.
How?
Yep.
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Armstrong?
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
Any students, if you guys need signatures, you can come up.